Welcome, Mr. Pivot. This is Reverend Russ. Super excited to have you join us again for this episode for this series, whether it's tonight, whether it's this morning, whether it's this afternoon, whenever you're tuning into watching. I am just immensely thankful to God for you watching. There are people watching all over the country, all over the world, and just super excited about that. The feedback that I've been getting, don't forget to comment, to like, to subscribe, to share, and to rate. That's the way that this podcast gets to be seen and sent it to somebody that you may know. Excited about all the podcasts that we've had up until now, really excited about this podcast as well that we have today. Don't forget, if you missed our last live pivot, you can see that pivot and all of the ministry pivots in on our website under conversations. They are there, but our last one, we were able to have Bishop John Bryant. We were able to have Reverend Dr. Lee P. Washington, and they shared so much knowledge, so many life lessons, so many ministry lessons that it was really just too much to have in that time. But we think I'm thankful that they took the time to come and share on hindsight on what it looks like coming from ministry in a successful space and what does retirement look like? They talked about retirement and what things you should look for, what things you should be thinking about. So again, go ahead to that episode and you'll be a part and you'll be able to hear and see that. Of course, don't forget that we have articles on the website. We're releasing several articles throughout the month. And so you can go there, you see the link now, the image now on our website at ministrypivot.com backslash articles again. And shout out to my ministry partner, GiveLify, really thankful for the partnership that I have with them. And so check them out as well, givelify.com. And also excited about this pivot that we have. We're going to be talking with Baltimore City Council President Nick Mosby. He's also my brother, my dear friend. Excited about our conversation. And then next month, we have Nona Jones, my sister, Nona Jones is going to be with us, talking digital ministry, talking digital discipleship, which is really a key piece that we need to hone in on as people of the church. But today, excited today, tonight, whenever you're watching, whenever you're listening, excited to have my brother, Council President Nick Mosby. Let's go ahead and hear more about that conversation. Welcome, Ministry Pivot, Reverend Russ, back again with another episode. Super excited that you decided to join us. Again, don't forget to like, to comment, to share, to subscribe, to share this with people. We have another great episode today as we walk through not just Ministry Pivot, but also Ministry Calling and dealing with marketplace leaders. I have a great friend and brother on today, Council President Nick Mosby. He's on today. He is a father. He is a husband. He is a leader and he is the city council president for Baltimore City. And so we're going to welcome Nick now to the episode with us. Nick, man, super excited, or Council President Nick, super excited to have you on with us today, tonight, whenever somebody is watching. Thanks for being on, man.
No, thanks for having me on, Reverend Russell.
Appreciate it, man. And so those of you that are listening or watching, Nick and I go way back. So we're trying to figure these titles out. I'm trying to make sure that I say city council president because that's his title. He's trying to say Reverend Russell because that's my title, but we are friends. And I am super excited about him. We go back to undergrad. I went to Morgan, Nick went to Tuskegee. But we during our leisure moments met up a lot. And so Nick is a great guy and I'm super excited to have him on today. I shared with you a minute ago about just this season and this session of us talking about those in the marketplace. And I find it super awesome, super dope that you are now the city council president for Baltimore City, a city that you and I both love, a city that you and I both appreciate. I'm not from Baltimore, but I spent a lot of time in Baltimore when I went to Morgan. Can you just tell us a little bit about kind of your history? I gave you a little bit of a bio, but there's way more to you than just those couple lines. And then also tell us a little bit about how did you know public service was a thing that you wanted to get into?
Well, I tell people all the time, I'm born and raised here in the city of Baltimore. I grew up in Northeast Baltimore in a three bedroom household with six women. Tell folks all the time, shared a bedroom with my mother and my sister, so I was probably about 14 years old. And I always thought that one day I could grow up, have an amazing family and have a son that take out the trash because that was my responsibility when I was old as I could remember it. And God blessed me with two beautiful daughters, three beautiful nieces and a whole slew of other females in my family. But growing up in that house, you know, my grandmother, my mother, they always taught me this amazing thing about dreaming. My grandmother used to always talk to me about being the first in my family to go away to college. And you know, they just instilled a lot in me. We didn't have a whole lot, but I didn't feel that way because it was just full of love, right? The church was always at the cornerstone of my house and my grandmother and my mother. And I was able and fortunate enough to do exactly what my grandmother said, went away to school, school called Tuskegee University in Alabama, majored in electrical engineering. Met my wife Marilyn Mosby, returned back to Baltimore, worked as an engineer, and then I got involved in politics. And the question was like, what made me interested in politics? When I was about eight years old, the first African American mayor of Baltimore was elected, Mayor Kurt Schmoke. And my mother had like so much hope, you know, for what he was going to be able to do for our community. And about, you know, just uplifting folks in our city. It was kind of like a microcosm of 2008 when President Barack Obama won for President of the United States. The excitement that we kind of just felt in my community. Well, that's how it was in my household. So when I went to school, it's the same level of excitement and it just really attracted me to being a leader, being a public servant, giving back to my community. And I just always had that yearning passion. So you look at me in middle school or high school or college, always involved in SGA's or leading some organization. So I worked as an electrical engineer for quite some time, but I knew I was going to get my toe in the arena of politics. I ultimately did that and won. And you know, I've been at this thing for a decade now.
Yeah. And let me say, this wasn't one of the things in the talk sheet, so we'll just flow on this, but I appreciate you and your push. I didn't know about you growing up, kind of, you know, I grew up in Brooklyn in the projects. I think we all got a similar story, but I know Baltimore is a whole different animal. And what I'm asking for the, what I'm posing is for the young man or the young woman who's from Baltimore, right? Who's watching this now, we're talking about marketplace leadership, we're talking about a call to community, we're talking about service. What's like one of the things that could, it was super inspiring to me, that's where I was going, that in the wake of the unfortunate Freddie Gray situations and the uprising, I saw you on like every network and it was cool, one, because I knew you, but it was cool, two, because I knew you. Like I knew that you were a dude who was serious about the community, serious about serving. And it was super cool because I knew that there were other brothers and sisters who were watching, who can be inspired by that. So my question to you though is, if they're watching or if they're listening, somebody sent this to them and you want to give them kind of one piece of kind of inspiration. What would you say to that young man, to that young sister?
You know, when you are, leadership is easy when everything is easy and everything is kind of set up right. And what you've always practiced or what you've always done is kind of before you, when everybody is like screaming your name or excited for whatever you're doing. And you're just rallied behind and getting a lot of support. Leadership is easy then, right? If that's, if that's your calling and that's where you are, you know, that's the easy moment. Real leadership comes in through sacrifice. Real leadership comes in through adversity. Real leadership comes in in the times that you could never predict or expect. And I say that because when I talk to that young man or that young woman and I say about, you know, what's the one characteristics that you should go into something that you're passionate about? And it's just being yourself, not trying to do something because you think it's the right way to do it or be someone because you think those characteristics are right for that particular time. Be yourself and what you can always fall back on when those times of adversity comes is yourself. It's who you are and who knows you. So you know, whether I was myself when we was 18 years old and you had that apartment in Essex and we trying to figure out where we're going to hang out for tonight, Russell? Or I'm myself now, you know who I am, right? And I think that that's where when those, when times of adversity comes up, it's the most important time. So you know, when, when people always talk about the interview on Fox, when I was in the middle of the unrest that went viral, it got like 2 million hits and, you know, 24 hours or whatever. You know, everybody who knew me knew that just that's exactly who I am. You know, it wasn't time for me to try to pretend to lead folks or disrupt the situation that was occurring or speak my mind the way that I did. That was just me being me. And I think that when you're true and genuine to yourself, you can have success. You can be put in positions of leadership, but that leadership really shows when it's time, it's challenges, when you face challenges, when you face challenges and adversity.
Yeah. No, I think that's great. And then again, that's the feeling I had, like I was, you know, we share the same age and I was sitting with my wife like, yo, that's Nick. That's crazy. And I was just excited because I knew that it was genuine, right? I knew that it was, it was leadership. So, so my next question is about the leadership role you're in now and the transition, right? How is the transition? You've been in office, we're recording this now in March, this will come out in April. You've been in office now as city council president for how long?
For about three months.
Three months. So how, how has that transition been to this, to this new role in the midst of COVID? We're going to get to COVID in a second.
Yeah, it's been, it's actually been pretty exciting because you know, I was on the city council, I left and served in the general assembly for four years. And now I'm back on the city council and as president. And what I was able to do is one, learn a lot from my five years on the council, learn a great deal from my four years in Annapolis and literally combine the two as relates to where we are right now. So I think that both of those opportunities in the past literally prepared me for today. And when we talk about trying to develop a council that is going to be efficient, effective, right and ready for the issues and challenges that are front and center for us. That's exactly what I'm attempting to do. So we had a lot of restructuring as relates to the configuration of the council and the bodies and committees and structure on the council. We brought in a dynamic, very progressive team of folks. When I tell, I talk, I talk about my team all the time. I say we're probably their most professionalized body of council that the city has ever seen. And I think that we've been able to prove really results quickly. You know, our first bill was a bill to provide relief for small businesses in the city. You know, the delivery app companies were charging upwards of 30 plus percent on every single order. You pay $20 for a meal, the restaurant's only getting 14, the delivery apps keeping six, plus whatever tipping they're providing them, right? And that was taken away from like our small businesses that were already in the struggle. So we were able to pass that and cap that at 15%. We have a housing bill that, you know, provides housing security for our folks. Insecurity is a major issue during this time, be it a shorty bonds for security deposits. So a lot of times people see the apartment that they want, that they need in the community that they need to be in, but unfortunately they can't deal with the security deposit and all of that. So develop, developing unconventional ways to keep everybody whole. It's a win-win situation for the property owner as well as for the resident. Delaying the late fees right now, if you own a home, you know, late fees go to the 15th of the month. But in apartments, you know, sometimes the max is five days, right? So let's cut the baby in the middle. Let's put it at 10%. Again, that $100, $150, $200 late fee could be what somebody's eating that month or taking care of other bills that particular month. And then lastly, just cause like, you know, right now, particularly in the midst of the global pandemic, we shouldn't just be evicting people because they got laid off based off of our economy based off of COVID. And now they're just out and homeless, right? So ensuring that we are sticking to the national and statewide and city orders, that landlords are unable to put folks out based off of COVID related issues. And ensuring that they're providing that cause, that just cause to the court system while they're doing it. Many folks were kind of going around the loophole. And then lastly, Reverend Russ, we're working on local hiring, right? So a city of Baltimore, you know, when we look at the racial wealth gap, when we look at the conditions of communities, of underserved communities, black and brown communities. We understand and know that it's been policy in the past, that ill-intended policy or just policy that folks didn't predict outright, that has created the current conditions that we're in right now, right? So I know that from a legislative perspective, it will be policy that we'll have to go after and kind of tackle those needs. So one of our, one or another first of our bills that we have is bills pertaining to local hiring, providing opportunities for young folks through city work, through city contractors, putting money into an apprenticeship fund to provide them opportunities, the skill sets of becoming plumbers and electricians and carpenters. Because we know that those are good paying jobs. They're going to be jobs here forever. And those children, those, those young folks should have access to those jobs right away, right? So looking at it from a vocational perspective, but then also looking at it from a STEM perspective. You know, what are the jobs in the next 10 or 15 years that we know if we train our young folks right, we expose them to that opportunity that they can best be prepared to take on those jobs? So I think the jobs of the city of Baltimore should be go to the residents of the city of Baltimore. And then lastly, this is not legislatively, this is just kind of my role as president, is on a board of estimates. That's the spending board for the city of Baltimore, but ensuring that local, small minority, black owned businesses have access to these contracts. Historically, in places like Baltimore, that has not been the case. You look at the vendors, it's not reflective of this city. So we want to continue to push it to ensure that we have a more inclusive process as it relates to giving out bids and people completing jobs.
Now, let me, let me, let me pause and double down to people who are listening, who are watching, whenever, don't forget to subscribe, to share, to like. But he said a lot and he said he started three months ago, just, just, just so we're clear on that. Because those were like, I asked for one or two, and it was actually one of the future questions I was going to ask, but you, I mean, I think the initiatives that you said, and I saw the piece about the, the delivery app. And it, a normal consumer like me doesn't get the behind the details of it, but when you mapped it out in the press conference that I saw, it made total sense. Like that, that's not, that's not helpful in order to start the economy back again and get people back to work. But what I want to, I want to point out is two things I heard you say, and I want you to comment on either. But one thing is, I think your experience cumulatively in life, what God allowed you to do when you were at Tuskegee Engineering, when you were on the council, when you went to Annapolis to come back. Those things equipped you to do what you're doing now. Those things helped you to do what you're doing now in a way that I don't think you could see. I know I couldn't see it when we knew each other. Like you said, I had an apartment in Essex. Let me just pause. That apartment in Essex was horrible. That apartment in Essex I had was horrible. I had no peephole. It's a whole nother story.
You was, you was so proud of the joint though. I never.
It was my first joint by myself, but.
You was proud of that joint. Yeah.
But, but, but I want to, I want to ask the question or you to share just, because I really want people to, sometimes when you have, people are listening and kind of watching, they kind of say, okay, well, that's him. But the truth is God has done the same thing in a lot of people's lives, but we have to be wise enough, smart enough, humble enough to understand that all of these things played a role into where I am now, right? Like, like all of the, all of the pieces that God did in your life allowed for you to be the council president that you are now. I don't know if you want to share on that. I got another question after this.
No, I mean, oh, definitely. I mean, I remember your apartment. Like I remember trying to get down to Alabama every year and hitchhiking and catching Greyhound buses and flying to the closest airport that was the cheapest ticket. And then just trying to work my way back to school. And I remember trying to stay in school, you know, we all had that same experience of not having enough money, not having enough money and being threatened to be put out of school and all that. So you know, I think it was that adversity, but that fight for what I knew was going to put me in a different perspective in life that really shaped who I was. I didn't know why I was doing it. I didn't know how I was doing it, but I was just so focused on my goal at that particular time that God allowed that path for me and connected me to the right individuals. I mean, who knew back in that apartment when we were laughing and joking based off of connecting the inroads that you would be Reverend Russell and I'd be President Nick Mosby now. And we care about the same things we cared about back then. You cared about your community in Brooklyn. I cared about my community in Baltimore. We just happen to be from two different cities with very similar backgrounds and issues and now look at where we are today, right? So I think that when we talk about it, you know, what I like to always speak to Reverend Russell is not just about the policies, right? Because we can talk about how like redlining and urban revitalization and, and, and just the policies that were put in place around mass incarceration and all those things, how they affected our community. We can continue to talk about them over and over and we can develop policies to kind of counteract it. But the one thing that we know that is really sustainable and what we know where we put our communities in a different position is what I like to talk about. And that's from a socioeconomic perspective, right? And until we get our folks, you know, educated or our folks in quality jobs, the ones who are unemployed or underemployed, until we're able to see black and brown companies compete and be on the same playing level as many of the other companies, until we're able to go after this thing called a racial wealth gap that is, is increasing right now. Then it's really hard to eradicate the systemic issues that we see in our communities. And you know, be, me being on the city council, me being president of the city council, you know, I think that it would not be, it is not my destiny. It is not my purpose. This is not the path that God has laid out for me to be in this position and not talk about those things in a way that people have been uncomfortable talking about in the past, right? And doing it in a righteous way. So that's why I'm so thankful to be in this position. I'm thankful for the experiences that I've learned to put me in this position to say the things and to, to kind of go after and tackle the things. But we got to really, really be focused on the socioeconomics of things. And that's how we forever change the trajectory of our communities.
Yeah, I think I totally wholeheartedly agree, man. And I think that's dope. And I'm not going to restate what you just said. The second piece though, that I heard you also say with your background is also your team. And that's one of the things, man, that I've been trying to impress with people in church, obviously, but also just in marketplace that, you know, it is a saying that if you want to go fast, go alone. If you want to go far, go together, right? And you said that you have a team that's been an incredibly helpful team in order to moving forward. And I really want people who are listening, who are watching to just get that and make sure they keep that. And I want you to share this a little bit more, just about how important it is to have a good team, to be able to, you know, I mean, you ran off four or five different types of legislation that you all are working on. But my assumption is if you didn't have the team you had, it'd be harder to do those things.
100%. And you know, that's what I teach my girls and that's what I talk to young folks about. And that's what I talk to old folks about, right? It's, you know, you're a reflection of who you surround yourself by, period, right? There was a reason that out of the hundred or some folks like in inroads that Russell connected with Nick and Nick connected with Russell, right? So you know, it's really about looking at not just your inner circle, but your circle of folks to really judge the barometer of success on like, where are you really trying to do? What you're really trying to do at that particular time with the situations at hand. And you know, I went out and I wanted to bring in the best and the brightest folks that I could find that I knew were going to be consistent with the passion I have for giving back to folks and for fighting for what is right for my city. And I, and I feel like that's exactly what I was able to do. And I think that, you know, what a leader cannot do is be afraid of not being the smartest person in the room. Or be afraid of not knowing everything that needs to be kind of figured out at that particular time. What a leader is literally there to do is kind of create that combination, that cohesiveness of what the team kind of represents and brings based off of the passion of that particular individual. And that's exactly what I've attempted to do. And you're right. I mean, we've done tremendous things. And you know, I have the same on my team. Like they say, well, you got to deliver this speech or you got congratulated on this or you still have to do that. And it's no, it's not me, it's we. It's like, we did this. I didn't do it, you know, you know, I happen to be the person that's out in front, but all of our jobs are just as important. Another thing to folks out there from a leadership perspective is a true leader doesn't want yes people around you. They want individuals that are going to tell you no, that are going to disagree with you, that are going to provide other solutions and best outcome. Because they feel and they have the autonomy of doing that on your team. Like that's the type of structure that you have in place. You know, I've always done that. I learned that very early on as a young electrical engineer with a very large team, kind of thrown into a situation. And that's what has always stuck with me even to this day. So those are the type of things that I go over with folks about one, building a team, about developing that cohesiveness, but then also ensuring that people have the, the authority, the know-how, the flexibility to kind of advocate for whatever opinion they're bringing to the table. Because at the end of the day, the best solution comes from a multi-faceted amount of perspective. That's what diversity brings to, to any table, whether it's a boardroom, looking at electrical engineering problem, or it's a boardroom in city hall talking about, you know, how do we, you know, counteract issues associated with digital equity and virtual learning?
Yeah, I think that's great. And I really hope that people listening and kind of, kind of hear that, that point. So I got two, two, two last questions for you. One, I do want to talk about COVID. I know, again, we're recording in March, it's to come out in April. The world is seemingly starting to reopen a little bit. I know you're very passionate about the vaccine and about our people getting the vaccines and they working out. But I want to, I want to ask you, the two questions are, the one question is kind of what are some of the pivots that the city council has had to make in light of COVID? And then the last question, which is a separate one, is just where do you see the future of the city? Like, like what, what is your best hope for the future of the city council? And then there's a resource thing in that, but the first one is just, just, just COVID and the pivots that you all have had to make in this season.
I mean, the pivots are very easy, you know, going to all virtual environment, you know, fortunately, well, fortunately for me, unfortunately for the past administration, they were like thrust into trying to set everything up. We were able to come in and just kind to, in kind of enhance and perfect some of the things that they were like forced to set up. So a complete virtual environment as it relates to us as council members dealing with one another, us dealing with the public. You know, so that's city council meetings, board of estimates meetings, committee meetings. As an elected official who's connected to like communities, no longer are you like physically seeing people face to face and at these events. You know, you are, you know, over Zoom and you are virtual. So that's a huge pivot as well. But I think through all of that pivoting that we had to do, I think a lot of it is going to come to just benefit the overall quality and accessibility and transparency of the way government operates. So no longer, whether we're in person or not, will we not have a city council meeting that's not live streamed, that folks will not be able to participate in because they're not physically inside of city hall. No longer will, you know, there not be a database of where testimony is kind of sent to and managed, you know, so folks can have the ability of expressing their opinion about certain situations. So those is like two really quick things that this current environment has forced us to create and do. But again, I think many of it is going to stick with us no matter when normalcy comes back. The one thing I'll stress is that, you know, I know folks are getting a lot comfortable and this will be in April, but it still will be relevant there that we still need to stay vigilant, right? Folks still need to, you know, aggressively develop ways of like washing their hands multiple, 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 multiple times a day, utilizing hand sanitizer, wearing your mask, staying socially distant, whether you have the vaccine or not. At the end of the day, we understand and know some folks with the vaccine can still carry the virus, right? Everybody's not going to have the vaccine in April. Once everybody has the vaccine, it doesn't mean that there won't be other variants out there. So I, I, I'm very alarmed at the level of comfortability that we've seen over the past couple of months. And you know, any chance I get a chance to talk to folks about the importance of still staying vigilant, that it's not time for us to act like everything is normal. And we were jammed up in some event a year, a year and a half ago, that this is not that time and it's still important to stay vigilant.
Yeah, no, I agree. And I'm praying that people listen. I, you know, I, it's a thing now. I got several types of masks. My church got masks. Friends are coming out. We're just, we're just trying to make sure that we stay vigilant with those pieces. Last, last question is what, what, what is your hope that you see for the future of the city council? What, what, if, if, if everything was perfect, which we know that's not going to happen necessarily perfect, perfect. But what's, what's your hope for the future of the city council?
So you know, I really went down this path of trying to professionalize the city council in a way that we haven't seen, to make us prepared for particularly the challenges that's going to come out of COVID. But more importantly, for the exciting future and growth for our young folks in our city. And I say that because again, it was our city council that developed policy that has created some of the conditions today. That's just real. That's a reality. And you know, whether I was a racist bigot, white supremacist flag carrying, you know, a hundred years ago, or I'm Nick Mosby now, I'm still part of that same body and I have to take that responsibility on. Like this is the city council and it must be us to really tear down those walls and. And I have to take that responsibility on, like this is the city council and it must be us to really tear down those walls and be the. Prescription of cure to these ills that these policies have created out of our body, uh, and literally being that, that voice right, so. So sorry about that. So, so what, what I will continue to do is again, build out that council in a professional way that we have never seen before. Uh, and make us relevant to really develop the substantive legislation that's gonna go after and try to, you know, fix and correct some of these, these systemic issues. No longer are we the city council that just deals with constituent services or filling potholes. But now a city council that will deal with the systemic issues of filling potholes in mental health, filling potholes in housing security. Filling potholes in the digital divide, providing real opportunities for our young folks. That's exactly what we have been called to do. That's what the charter says we're gonna do and as the president of the city council, um, you know, it's my mission that we create that body that does that.
That's awesome, man. I, I'm, I'm super excited again about you being where you are, about the agenda that you have. I've learned more about the agenda since we've had this uh, conversation. Uh, I do want to ask this last question for those who are uh, listening, those who are watching in leadership, again, in the marketplace. Um, are there any uh, books or resources or things that come to mind that you would recommend? Uh, as people are trying to navigate this space, just navigate leadership, we talked a lot about leadership. And so I always like to ask, um, if there are any uh, resources that you recommend that some people uh, grab. I'm gonna have show notes uh, in the bottom uh, of this uh, episode. And so anywhere, uh, whether you're watching or listening, you'll be able to get the show notes, but any, any resources?
I'll, I'll give a couple of resources as relevant to stuff we spoke about today. Uh, one, a leadership book I read right before I took office, it was like the ninety day um, transition plan or something like that. Really good book, so I don't know the author, but gave me a lot of good advice on like setting up my team, setting up the office. Um, I'm gonna take it back to Tuskegee, The World in Africa by W E B Du Bois. It's always a book that I think folks should kind of lean on and relevant to kind of what we spoke about today. Um, something that's relevant to Baltimore about our current situation, this was written maybe about ten years ago, Not in My Neighborhood. That is a really good book to really talk about um, how bigotry, how bigotry shaped uh, Great American City, I think is the, the subtitle. Uh, it's specifically to Baltimore, but relevant to Brooklyn, relevant to Cleveland, relevant to Oakland, you know, any of our urban areas. So I'll, I'll do like a very diverse eclectic, uh, since it was on the spot question, I would just grab those three things. I think those, those were three books that kind of um, spoke consistent to the things that I was talking about today.
No, I appreciate that, man. And those are great. You're right, on the spot, uh, you, you've been, you've been a champ. I appreciate it, uh, President uh, uh, Mosby. But uh, it, 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 it was great having you on, man. Um, I am uh, supporting, you know this, outside of this camera. Um, I'm supporting, man, whatever you're doing. Um, I, and, and if anything, anyway, we can help, I can help. If somebody wants to, to help, somebody wants to support, somebody wants to get involved. Um, what are some ways? We have your IG link there. I'm gonna link in uh, the city council uh, website in the show notes. But any last minute things that if somebody wants to support, wants to help, wants to get involved, uh, what would you tell them?
We, we try to be very active on social media, you know, check us out. Um, you know, don't hesitate to participate, please watch our meetings, please hold us accountable. Particularly to the folks in the Baltimore metropolitan area and of course, since we on ministry, continue to pray for us. You know, when you're out in front and you're fighting for change, specifically change that structurally has never been there for the communities in which you come from and you're fighting for and your support. You know, it's not always easy. There's a tremendous amount of sacrifice. Uh, and you know, the prayer warriors out there kind of always hold, not only me, but my wife who's also in a very similar position. That gets a tremendous amount of scrutiny all the time. Um, if it wasn't for those prayer warriors, I'm not sure we would be where we are. So you know, from a ministry pivot perspective, don't pivot too far away from praying for the folks that are there for you, keeping us in mind. You know, truly, truly appreciate it, Reverend Russell, whenever you want us, me to come back on, please don't hesitate to reach out, brother.
Nah, I appreciate it, man. I appreciate you uh, coming on. Thank you all for watching, for listening again. Uh, don't forget to subscribe, don't forget to like, to share, to rate, uh, and to share this with someone that's gonna be helpful. Uh, the show notes are gonna be great with those resources on there. Uh, thank you again, uh, for watching Ministry Pivot. And don't forget that this is your season of opportunity regardless, uh, to what's in front of you, there's an opportunity uh, before you. Talk to you soon. God bless.